All right, approval of the minutes. So we need a motion in a second. Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Morehouse seconds. Any speaking to the minutes?
There was one correction provided by Supervisor Lyon. There was a typo in Resolution 50. The word should be benefit. You will note it Supervisor Lyon, thank you. It's almost like you should have been an editor instead of pass.
All right, hearing nothing else, all in favor of approving the minutes? Any opposed? Motion passes. Presentations of petitions, memorials, and other communications. I don't have anything. Anybody else? I will note that this is our last meeting with Nick Lang here as in person. He will be with us for the December meeting, but I very much appreciate your work, Nick. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I will open the public hearing on the proposed FY 2025 budget and property tax levy. Do we have any speaking at the? Looks like no. I will now close the public hearing portion of the meeting and move on to public comment. Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, moving on from public comment. Appointments, you have the appointments in front of you. I will make one note, the Board of Adjustment is not a primary board seat, it is one of the alternates. So I would need a motion in a second. Supervisor Bauer moves. Supervisor Lyon beat you to it by just a moment. Any speaking to the appointments? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Appointments pass. Reporter, the county manager, Chris.
Hey, good evening. Which is sort of was over 40,000. There were two noted in your packet. Any question about those? All right, and I just wanted to give you another quick update on our process of procurement of a new financial enterprise system. We have been doing, so we did a request for proposal. We had nine entities that bid. We selected five for demos, and we've been doing those demos with staff over the last few weeks. We did two, one week, four, we did two days, one week for one vendor, four days last week for two more vendors, two days this week for a vendor, and then two days next week. And after that, we will go through the process of evaluating those, looking at the cost proposals, and then hopefully selecting, beginning in the negotiations, to select a vendor for that. So there's certainly been a wide variety of presentations over the last few weeks, and I think that they've been eye-opening to kind of everybody involved in the wide variety of systems that are available. So to be continued. I think that's all that I have. I have thought since you heard from Andrew Marcell last month coming into the elections, it might be helpful to have him kind of tie that up and tell us how the election actually went.
The election went. Are there any questions? Sorry. So the 2024 partisan election was completed, and we are in the process right now of certifying the election results. It was a very high turnout election. There were 25,792 voters in Dunn County, the highest number of voters we've ever had. Of registered voters, that makes a 96% voter turnout. Now, that doesn't include that was registered voters the day of the election. We do same-day registration in Wisconsin, so we had many hundreds additional registrations go on. But of the eligible voters in Dunn County, there are 36,561 eligible voters in Dunn County. That information comes from the United States Census. And of those, the voter turnout, when we look at eligible voters, was a 71% voter turnout. Wisconsin was one of the states in which voter participation increased significantly across almost every county versus several other states that actually saw decreased participation for this election when it was compared to 2020. Each of you represent one or maybe more communities that has a municipal clerk. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the hard work and diligence that the municipal clerks have done. Last week on Thursday ironically was Election Heroes Day, and I have not had an opportunity to express my thanks and undying appreciation for the work that the municipal clerks do. So if you see them, if you happen to serve on your municipal board, or if you could just drop them a note, they would really appreciate it. They worked very, very hard. This was the largest, we don't call it early voting in Wisconsin, it's called in-person absentee voting, but this was the largest participation of in-person absentee voting ever. It was incredibly frustrating, I think, for people because a lot of the clerks are part-time clerks, and they might be working full-time jobs and then going to the municipal hall after they work full-time, and then doing in-person absentee voting by appointment, sometimes till 9:30 or 10 o'clock at night. So they were really trying to bend over backwards and make every opportunity available for the citizens to be able to vote in-person absentee if they wished. There were actually more in-person absentee voters in the city of Menominee than were actual absentee ballots that were mailed out from requests. So the city did an incredibly diligent job. They moved their office over to the council chambers and facilitated just a constant stream of people coming to participate in our democracy. So it was really admirable. I would also like to report that even though we talked a lot about the threats to election officials, we had a very successful election day in that everyone was very respectful. Nobody caused too much of a stink at any single polling location. There were only a handful of reports of people who got a little gruff and a few faintings. The lines, not Chris, that I know of. The lines at the university, for example, were 90 minutes pretty much throughout the day, which then became a two-hour wait, which then became a two-and-a-half-hour wait. Even though the city and a lot of groups tried to do a lot of voter registration drives before the election, you can do same-day voter registration, and so the stout students took advantage of that. So it did take quite a long time. Our final result did not come in on election day. It came in at 3:00 AM on Wednesday morning. So I was here, not that that matters, but your election officials work really, really diligently. A lot of the municipal clerks are there at 5:00, 5:30, 6:00 in the morning, and then if they don't get to leave till 3:00 AM the next day, that gets to be a very long day. So I would just like to say they did an excellent job. There were over 250 poll workers that worked the elections across Dunn County. 236 of them came to be trained here the week before the election. So it was really a successful election that, for the most part, went off very smoothly. Everyone stayed calm considering the huge increase in participation. So that was exceptional. We are still in the process of certifying the election results. We started on Monday. We will continue tomorrow. We met again today, and we'll meet again tomorrow. There's just some components about having increased participation that we have to work through a lot of additional paperwork and information. So with that, I'll ask if there are any questions regarding that election. I will just note that I had to send a note to the municipal clerks today that they have to start prepping their type A notice for the next election because you can take out papers starting December 1st to run for school board and local municipal offices. They weren't thrilled with that email, but it is their job. So they have to have it published or posted by next week on Wednesday. So we're already prepping for the next election even though we haven't officially closed this one out.
Supervisor Hagan.
Just a clarification on the percentage of voter turnout. Did you say that encompass the same-day registration or no?
The eligible voters would include that information for the people who are potential to be same-day voter registrations. But no, the total registered voters number was from the morning of the election. We still have clerks that are updating their logs to make sure that we can figure out exactly how many same-day voter registrations there were, but there were thousands of them.
With that being said, would we be able to get just an updated number later on?
Yeah, once I can close this report and close the election, I'd be happy to send an updated report with some of those final numbers. Like I did mention, I think the information that's reported on election night are all unofficial results, right? It's the municipal boards of canvas meet that night or in the morning the next day and report their information, and then the county board of canvas is the certification body. So it's me and two other individuals, and so we're working through that process to come up with the official numbers. So, yeah.
Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you. I was just looking at your unofficial results.
Yeah.
What's the provisional ballot? I see there's 13.
Sure. Yeah, there were 13 provisional ballots. A provisional ballot can be issued to a voter who has come to participate in the election but has not been able to prove they are who they are. So like if you went to the polls, you have to show an acceptable form of ID. If you showed up at 7:45 and got in the two-and-a-half-hour line and didn't have your acceptable ID, you can actually be issued a provisional ballot.
For example, someone called me on the morning of the election having looked up the Dunn County website number and gotten mine instead and wanted to vote, and they had just bought a new house in Elk Mound, and they had not yet changed all of their forms. So they were like, what do I need to do? So I explained to them how to go in and file for provisional ballot.
Yes. So if you don't have an ID or proof of residence, you can be issued a provisional ballot. You have until 4:00 PM on the Friday after the election to go to your municipal clerk and prove whatever you need to prove. Here's an updated free voter ID that I got from the DMV that shows I am who I am. For example, you can't use a Texas ID to prove that you're a Wisconsin voter. We did have that instance. Of the 13 provisional ballots that were issued, one was actually cast during Board of Canvas. So 12 individuals chose not to present their information or credentials that they needed to. So that's how a provisional ballot works. You have to have lived in the state of Wisconsin for 28 days to participate in the election. Every four years, we have what's called a presidential-only ballot, which means if you move from out of state into the state of Wisconsin, but you do not meet the 28-day requirement, you can be issued a presidential-only ballot. So you can vote for the offices of president and vice president. Those are all hand-tallied, and we did have a total of six of those that were issued. So one of those unique quirks about the election. Any other questions Supervisor Wilson?
One more Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you mentioned the standing in line for the stout students, and I'm not familiar at all with wards in Menominee, but I would assume the students are voting in a ward where the residence hall is. Are all the residence halls in the same ward?
That's an excellent question. No, they're not. North Campus is in wards three and four, and they vote at City Hall next to the Farmers Market Pavilion. The South Campus dorms are all located in wards five and seven, and they vote at the Merrill Price Commons Building. So they do split them up that way. That's actually a couple supervisory districts. But they do that specifically because each of your supervisory districts has to have 1,562 roughly voters per ward. So that's how they split campus up. So City Hall numbers went pretty well. They still had long lines, but nothing like Price Commons. Price Commons includes all of the South dorms, which are all the freshman dorms. So these are brand-new spanking 18-year-olds who are participating for the first time and don't know what they're doing. So it's quite exciting. But we got them processed, and everybody was able to cast their ballot. Who was in line at 8:00 PM, the last person who was in line at 8:00 PM when the polls closed, anyone who's in line is still allowed to vote, that last person didn't cast their ballot until 10:30. So it was quite, quite all. And then after that, then the election inspectors have to start processing any absentee ballots that were issued because they didn't have time during the day. So that wards five and seven reported their election results at 3:00 AM the next day. So, yes, so long day. Any other questions? If you do and you want to reach out, I'll get some updated numbers and information sent to the supervisors, but feel free to reach out.
Thank you, Andrew.
Okay, and following up on that, last Thursday, Governor Evers declared, sorry, Friday, November 4th. When was November 4th? Monday, 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 November 4th. It's Election Hero Day, and I just thought I would read to you the proclamation. Says, hey there, Wisconsin, Governor Tony Evers here. Millions of Wisconsinites went out to the polls or emailed or mailed their ballots and made their voices heard in recent weeks. On top of that, this week, we also celebrate Election Hero Day. Election Hero Day gives all of us the opportunity to honor, recognize, and thank our dedicated local clerks, election administrators, poll workers, voter education groups, and postal service workers. In Wisconsin, our election workers are our friends and neighbors who answer the call to serve and go above and beyond to ensure our elections are safe and secure. They work tirelessly to promote our voter engagement and participation, protect access to the ballot box, and make sure a reliable ballot is counted. And while election administration is never an easy responsibility, these folks have faced immense unprecedented challenges over the past few years, and they've never failed to display courage, resilience, and dedication. So on behalf of our entire state, I want to express my sincere appreciation for all those who work tirelessly to protect the integrity of our elections and provide safe, secure, and accessible voting experiences for voters all across Wisconsin. You are heroes to me and to our neighbors and communities and to our democracy. And I would like to personally ask you if you would join me in a round of applause for Andrew for the work that he put in to get us ready. And with that, that's all I have.
Onto item nine, reports of departments. Neighbors of Dunn County, Carmen, come on up.
Hello. For those of you that I have not met yet, my name is Carmen Meyer. I am the administrator at the Neighbors, or community mentor is another term, I guess, or title that we use here. So today, I'm going to give a report, start with kind of the overview of the neighbors for all of our new supervisors that haven't heard about us before or anything like that, and then also go into some specifics about long-term care in our community. It's the long-term care in our community report some of you have seen before. If you were on the executive committee in the last term, we went over this, but but I thought it was a good thing to share with everyone here as it does affect everyone in our community. So first, just a little overview about the neighbors. All right, so we have three separately licensed skilled nursing facilities that are all owned and operated by Dunn County. So if you see the acronym SNF or SNIF, that just stands for skilled nursing facilities. Try to save some space and not type it out a bunch of times. In total, we have 137 beds spread across those three nursing homes. There are nine households. They truly do look like little homes. If you've never been over there before, you're welcome to come tour and see what they're like, but they really do look like little homes, much different than when the facility was in this building, and they were hallways, more clinical. We truly have a home-like feel at the neighbors. Two of the nine households are post-acute rehab. One of those is currently closed. We are operating eight households primarily due to staffing. We believe that we should only admit to the level that we can staff to to make sure that we're providing excellent care for our residents. So right now, we have eight of the nine households open. Two memory care households, so those are memory care-specific. They are licensed the same as skilled nursing, but we do adapt them to be a little bit more safe and secure for people that may wander or have behaviors that fall under memory care. And then the five other are just long-term care, so the typical nursing home bed. Current census is averaging around 110, so not currently full, but that is primarily due to the one household being closed. The rest of the eight households are normally very full. In the past year, and you'll see this in your report as well, there was 246 residents that lived at the neighbors. So at any given time, we're operating at about 110. So that's admits and discharges throughout the year, so there's 246 lives served. The services that we offer, so we have 24-hour nursing care, so that's something that's specific to skilled nursing facilities versus like an assisted living or a group home. We have a nurse on staff 24 hours a day. Because we are three separately licensed nursing homes, we actually have three nurses at a minimum as each building has to have a nurse at all times. During the day, we have more than that. Night shift is a time that the minimum is three nurses. We offer therapy services through a contracted company. They are in-house. We have physical, occupational, and speech therapy that is done through both group therapy and individual therapy. We have five days a week physician or provider on site. That's something very unique to the neighbors. We have a provider of some sort, whether that be an MD or a nurse practitioner on site five days a week. Most nursing homes, you might see a doctor there once a week, so we really pride ourselves in being able to provide those services on all business days. We provide culinary services for our residents. That includes specialized diets. We have many residents that are on a different textured diet due to swallowing issues as well as different diets for medications and other needs. We also have an on-staff dietitian, which is somewhat unique to us. Commonly, those are contracted out and come in on a regular basis. We have an on-staff dietitian to meet all of our residents' dietetic needs. Life enhancement, or you might have heard of it as activities, that's our fun department. They oversee the programs that our residents do during the day. They have events, and then everybody's favorites is outings. Social services, they meet the needs of our residents to make sure that their affairs are in order and they can help with any concerns that they have, things like that. Hospice care, that is done through multiple different contracted agencies. We don't do our own hospice care, but they come in and provide that care at the neighbors. Radiology and lab services, they also come in through a contracted service. We do do some lab tests at the facility. Otherwise, we send them out to Mayo. Maintenance, that includes our laundry and housekeeping as well as maintenance of the grounds and facilities, and then medical record management. So we keep track of all medical records, and that is archived for the all of eternity, so anyone can go back and get their medical records if they request it. And then beyond, nursing home care services. So the neighbors does some other things that go beyond the typical nursing home services. We are the senior meals provider for Dunn County. So the ADRC department here at Dunn County provides senior meals to residents out in the community. The neighbors is who cooks those meals. So we roughly have 120 to 130 meals served every single day. So those are made in our main kitchen and then sent out to the meal sites in the community. We have partnerships with Healthcare Workforce Training Institute, so that is our onsite CNA training. So that is what is currently being used in our closed household. We have a contract with a company that comes in and does training for CNAs, and then they do their clinical experience with our residents. We have clinical internships and training for other different entities. So UW Stout comes in with dietetic and social services interns, so they'll have interns come and work under our dietitian and then also our social workers. We are also the nursing home contract for Mayo Systems residency program. So our physicians who are there five days a week every once in a while, they'll have a resident come with them and learn how to provide nursing home care to residents. And then CVTC, we also partner with them for nursing and CNA clinicals. So they do their training actually at CVTC, and then they come to the neighbors to do clinical experience. We have outpatient therapy services through our therapy department, and then we also do community events, fundraisers, and outreach in the community. We are frequently at different events. The one that's coming up soon is the Christmas parade or the winter parade. We have a float in that every year, and we go to other community events as well and do a lot of fundraising. All right, so that was kind of a brief overview of the neighbors. The neighbors is a big operation with lots of different moving parts, so it's a little hard to get into too much detail. But if you ever have any questions about the neighbors, you can always feel free to ask me them. A little bit more of a specific report is the state of senior living in our community and why the neighbors is important for our community. So this is less specific to the neighbors, but more about how long-term care operates in Dunn County and Wisconsin as a whole, and why the neighbors makes an impact in our community. Elderly population increase. So this is no secret, the elderly population is increasing at a very rapid number. So in 1990, 3.1 million US citizens were 65-plus. That was 4.1% of the population. By 2020, 55.8 million US citizens were 65-plus, making up 16.8% of the population. By 2010 to 2020, the increase of 15.5 million 65-plus was twice as rapid of any increase as the previous decade. So those are national numbers, and there's also a huge impact in Dunn County specifically. In 2010, 65-plus made up 12% of the Dunn County population. By 2020, it was 65 made up 16.9% of the Dunn County population. And then by 2040, the projected percent of Dunn County's population that will be 65-plus is 26.3%. That is a very large portion of our population, and it's important to focus on who's going to take care of our aging population. So why? Again, no shocker to most people, the baby boomer generation is aging. So born in 1946 to 1964 is considered part of the baby boomer generation. That makes up 76.4 million people. By 2029, all baby boomers will be 65-plus. In 2029, US Census Bureau projects 61.3 million baby boomers will still be alive. Increase in average life expectancy has continued to go up with the exception of COVID-19. So below is a graph. You can see that the age expectancy of our population has continuously increased, except there is a little bit of a dip because of COVID-19 did have an impact on our elderly population, so then age expectancy did go down. So the state of long-term care, according to the CDC, there are 15,600 nursing homes in the United States. That's 1.7 million beds. So those are actual physical beds. Every bed is licensed. Dunn County currently has four skilled nursing facilities. The neighbors is three of the four, so really it's us and one other in the whole county. That total is 174 skilled nursing beds in Dunn County, and we are 137 of them. So we are the majority of the nursing home beds in our county. Decrease in skilled nursing home beds across not only the state, but also our county has made a huge impact. So in the last nine years, eight years, so since 2016, 66 nursing homes in Wisconsin have closed. That has gone up by two since the last time I gave this report to the executive committee. There is 64. So in less than a year, there has been two more nursing homes in Wisconsin closed. Of those 66, 12 of those nursing homes were within 50 miles of Dunn County.
Just a moment. Supervisor Steen, you have a question?
Yes, Carmen, that last, if you could go back on your graph there that showed the nursing homes that have closed within 50 miles of Dunn County, just think about that now, folks. That's your loved ones that may get stuck in a nursing home 100 miles from where they live, and the additional strain and stress that puts on not only the resident but the family. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Steen.
So here's a list of the nursing homes that were within 50 miles of us that closed in the last couple of years. So we have quite a few here. I won't go through the whole list just for the sake of time, but a lot of those were within 50 miles, like I said, all of these were. But some of those were really close to home. The rest, the end of that was all in Dunn County. So the Pioneer Home, Colfax, and Elmwood are all very close to us. The rest were kind of on the outskirts, whether it be in O'Clare or further away. But those three were ones that we had referrals from, we sent referrals to to get people closer to home, things like that. But those three closed in the last year. This graph is the Wisconsin nursing home bed decrease. So this is just a visual of the nursing home beds decreasing. So not only are we losing licensed nursing homes, but they are also de-licensing beds. So when you de-license a bed in the state of Wisconsin, you can't get it back. So there's a moratorium on beds in Wisconsin. So if, say, we were to say, well, we have a closed household, let's drop those 15 beds. We have to think about that really carefully because right now, sure, we could get rid of those beds. We don't need them at the moment, but if we were able to fill them later, we wouldn't be able to get those licensures back, how the current regulations are on that. So not only are there closures, but there's also downgrades or shrinkings in beds. So at the beginning of 2020- So that at the beginning of 2020, there was 28,719 beds. And by October of 2022, there is 25,891 beds. So where are people, people going? There we go. So kind of to Supervisor Steen's point, when we don't have nursing home beds in our area, people have to go in other places. So sometimes they go home when they aren't ready to do so and that typically ends up with people going back to the hospital. If they don't want to go far away from home, they don't have a place to go. If they just decide to go home and they are not physically ready yet, that can lead to falls, worsening of wounds, injuries, infections, things like that. They might go to a lower level of care than a nursing home and then the same could be as going home. So they might go to an assisted living or a group home that can't truly meet their care needs. They might go to nursing homes outside of their community, which makes it a very hard thing for families to drive hours to see their loved ones, as well as people spend their whole lives in their community and then when they need us the most, they're having to go somewhere else. And then they might actually stay in the hospital and that has become an everly, ever-increasing problem, especially in our community. We already were short on hospital beds. It was frequently that we were getting the hospitals calling us, begging to admit people because they don't have room for them and they can't send them home. And now we lost several hospitals in our community. So now we have even more or even less hospital beds and more demand for them. So hospitals are feeling the pressure to get people out faster and they have to have a place to go. A little bit of a turn here, there's also a difference in ownerships of nursing homes. So as you all are aware, we are owned and operated by Dunn County. So we are a municipal-owned nursing home. So there are three different kinds of nursing homes. Then the percentages in Wisconsin are listed there. So for-profit nursing homes are owned by for-profit companies. That makes up about 54% of the nursing homes in Wisconsin. Not-for-profit makes up 32% of the nursing homes. And then government-owned, which would be either counties or state-owned nursing homes, make up 14%. Government and nonprofit nursing homes are frequently grouped together as they are mission-driven organizations. So we typically do things with the other not-for-profit nursing homes because it is a similar mindset of we are there to serve the residents. Any money that we are able to make goes back to bettering the facility and not to a company. A little bit more on the comparison of the different ownership types. So for-profit nursing homes are more likely to have deficiencies. So when we have survey come into the building, they issue things that are called deficiencies or citations. The numbers of those are much higher in for-profit nursing homes. They have lower star ratings. So we're issued star ratings from C M S, which is the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. They are more likely to be a special focus facility, which is something the state issues to a building if they have significant compliance issues. And then have lower staffing ratings. Not-for-profit or government-owned nursing homes are more likely to have higher quality measures. So we do report things like falls, injuries, infections. So we are more likely to have better quality measures on any of the measures that are tracked. We have fewer pressure injuries. So that is the current term for what you might know as a bed sore. That is something that is very heavily looked at and scrutinized is making sure that we do not have pressure injuries and government and nonprofit nursing homes have fewer, have higher star ratings and then have less deficiencies. The average five-star rating for an ownership type is also different. So for-profits average at a 2.7 five-star rating for Wisconsin nursing homes. Not-for-profits are 3.1 and government is 4.1. Okay. Now a little bit more specific about N D C. So outlook on the financial picture of N D C. So in the past financial picture of N D C, it's gone up and down. For those of you who have been on the board for a while, have seen some years that have had really good financial years and some years not so much. Most of the years have had an operating surplus. So that is just expenses and revenues and not including depreciation. So we do look at it both ways, making sure that we are keeping our operating expenses and revenues in line. So most years have had an operating surplus if we take depreciation out of it. The past two years have, we have experienced operating losses, which was partially offset by 2021's profit of $1.5 million and then the projected income of 2024. So this year, we are projecting to be in the black for the current year, as well as we were in 2021, which offset our two years that had losses. So the current financial picture, a substantial improvement, we're happy to share, that are currently projected to have a $1.2 million operating surplus and a $577,000 surplus if we include depreciation. So this is a huge impact and a huge improvement of having not only an operating surplus, but also a surplus once we put into depreciation. And then looking at the future financial picture. With the help of Beeta and Chris, we have gone and Jane, who is the financial person that oversees the neighbors finances as well. We have gone through an exercise of projecting out the next five years. Would it not be a perfect science? We're hoping that it gets us a little bit closer to seeing how things can go in the future, looking at both our rates, census, cost expenses, inflation going up, all of those things. And through that exercise, it does currently look like the next five years will all be projected to be in the black. Okay. Now, after all this serious talk of finances, I'd throw in a couple of fun pictures in there as well that show some of the things that we do and that makes our residents' lives happy. Like I said, life enhancement is the fund department. So there's four pictures here and these were all taken within the last couple of months. So this isn't over a whole year. This is, some of these were this week. So one is fishing at Jeremiah Bullfrog's Fish Farm. One is a tour of Bill's Distributing. One was a trip to Govan's Farm and they got to bring the animals onto our bus. The brand-new bus was thoroughly cleaned after the animals were on there. And then we also went to see the U W Stout Gymnastics Practice, which was a fun thing for our residents. They were invited back to come whenever to see any of their practices or meets as well. So this does show the impact that we have on not only our residents' lives, but also the community. All of these were community outings. Every week, there is at least one. This week, there was three community outings so that they are involved in the community and they get to be in their local community. So that is a big thing for a lot of our residents. A lot of the residents have gone to Govan's Farm every year for the last 40 years. So they get to still do that. So we really enjoy having them have that opportunity. Anyone have any questions for me at all?
Supervisor Wolf.
Yes, thank you. Can you give me a little bit of information on the Secret Santa program that's about to happen?
Sure. So every year we do, we call it Secret Santa. So anybody can sign up to be a Secret Santa for a resident. If you have a specific resident that you'd like to be their Secret Santa, you can tell Alyssa, who is our life enhancement director, who you want to be a Secret Santa for. Otherwise, you can just sign up and then she will email you or send you, I believe it's primarily done through email, but will send you a list to get the resident. So each person will be assigned somebody. So it's normally things like a certain scented lotion or a blanket or fuzzy socks. So they'll send, she'll send what the resident might like, their sizes, things like that. So anybody is open to sign up. We just make sure that every resident has somebody for Secret Santa and we typically have more than enough volunteers. Of course.
Supervisor Calabrese.
I don't think it's on.
Should be. There we go.
Oh, yeah. I have that problem. You mentioned that when you get rid of beds, that you're not allowed to have them back. Does that hold true for all three types of skilled nursing facilities, for-profit, nonprofit and government?
Correct, yes. It's a state moratorium.
Do you have any insight as to why that is?
I can't really speak to why it is because it is a legislative thing. So it was, has been in place for a long time. There was actually a study done about it through a third-party company that the state hired this year to do it and they decided to continue it based on their study. So I know that it is continuing. It was looked at. I don't actually understand the rationale myself because obviously we need beds. I think the current rationale is that they would like people to stay in places that are less restrictive than nursing homes. So there's a big push for C B R Fs, which is a form of assisted living. So there's a lot of those in communities and this, in all honesty, it's cheaper. So I think that is one of the big pushes.
And so the house that you currently have that's closed, those aren't, that's not the same as getting rid of beds, it's just on hiatus?
Correct. So we did not de-license the beds. That does have a minimal cost to us to not de-license the beds because we pay a bed tax to the state for every bed in the facility.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bauer.
I think your mic isn't.
Now can you hear me? Thank you. To open up that ninth house? You're just looking for, I mean, more help? I mean, they're just not out there, is that the thing? And then when would you project you could open that if possible and then what your profits would be if it was open? I mean, it would really increase a lot, I'm sure, but it would.
Sure. So currently it is related to staffing. So we, in years past, have actually had up to two houses closed. So I believe at the last year when I gave this report, we had just opened the eighth of the nine houses. It is 100% due to staffing. We do have the referrals that we could fill the beds. We don't have the staff. That being said, one of the issues is the only way to currently get staff that if we could fill it today would be through agency help, which is extremely expensive. So we're trying to kind of find where the crossing point is between the amount of agency staff and filling the beds. And we think currently with having eight, we are actually having a better revenue versus expenses than if we were to open it with agency staff. Because an agency R N base rate is $80 an hour. And that's base rate, not including overtime, not including holidays, things like that. So it is extremely expensive to use agency staffing and right now that would be our only option to open that household.
Supervisor Bashan.
So if you have the C N A course in that ninth house now, if you were to open it, would that have a place to be?
Yes. So it would still actually stay in that household. We have a training room in that household. They've kind of used more of it in the time being, but they would just then be kind of sequestered back to the training room.
Supervisor Steen.
Yes, Carmen, I'm sure that you've done some studies, but I'm just wondering if we offered better benefits and more money, would you be able to attract the staff that you need to open that up and then in turn make, make more money?
I think that's a little bit of a loaded question, but in theory, it could help. I don't necessarily think it would always help. We, our community just does not have enough nursing staff. So we have quite a few people that either go and work in other industries or things like that. It is a really hard job to work in healthcare. So I think it could help, but I also don't have a crystal ball to say that it 100% would help. In terms of that too, is we follow the same structure of benefits and pay as the whole county. So it wouldn't, we can't just adjust the neighbors in terms of benefits specifically. So.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Steen. Anyone else?
Seeing no one, you're off the hook.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen. Next up, Highway. Dustin, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dustin Binder, the Dunn County Highway Commissioner. I oversee the Highway Department. I will present to you the 2023 annual review for the Highway Department. So the Highway Department consists of 51 full-time employees. As you can see, this is the list of employees. We have 37 field operators, which has the, the majority of the staff at the Highway Department. As you can see, this was a struggle to get everybody to take a picture, but we got them. We got the crew there. We're not a social bunch, I know that. Just a little background about the department. So the Highway Department maintains 425 miles of roadways, approximately 850 lane miles. We rank, if you put it in rankings perspective, we are seventh in the state of Wisconsin out of 72 counties for miles of roads that we maintain. So I continually tell you that, just so that you put it into perspective. We are the only state in Wisconsin, in the U S, that we actually contract with the D O T to perform maintenance on state roads. So that is the only state in the U S that actually performs that type of work on behalf of the state. Outside of that, we also do perform work for the towns in municipalities as needed. In 2023, we completed 13.49 miles of road construction projects. 38,000 tons of asphalt was placed and that would be about a 31 and a half year lifespan if we would continue doing 13.49 miles of roadways. The cost to do that was approximately $5 million to perform that 13.49 miles. That is the list of what we consider our construction projects. So you'll see some of the typical road construction sections, as well as some engineering and some future projects that we're preparing for years down the road. I won't go into the list of project details here. This is in your packet, so. List of roads that we did was County Road B Z and then County Road B up by Sand Creek, along with County Road Q and W, County Road K overlay and some design costs for future projects. There's just a few pictures of some of the projects that we completed. Outside of road construction, we perform quite a few maintenance operations. Typically, what's funded for completing our maintenance projects is funded by our G T A, which is gas tax. In 2023, we just, we received just over $1.6 million of gas tax aid to complete the maintenance on the, on, on the county level. On top of that, we, we do have a vehicle registration fee in Dunn County, $20 per vehicle, which generates just over $700,000 within Dunn County. This is just kind of a breakdown of a list of our maintenance duties that we perform on a daily basis. As you can see, majority of the costs in our maintenance are surface maintenance, which is pothole patching. Could be overlays, it could be just minor, minor repairs to the asphalt, as well as vegetation control, which is mowing our ditches and tree removal. Typically, if we're not plowing snow in the winter months, we're cutting trees. So that's that type of work. And then you got seal coating, which is applying a thin layer of oil and then the aggregate on top of it that most of us hate driving on when it's completed. And there's just the list, detailed list of all of our maintenance. I did try to put in there like lifespan of some of these operations as well. So it gives you kind of a general idea of how many years. So it gives you kind of a general idea of how many years uh, we have to look at trying to do another seal coat or pavement markings or um, filling potholes. Winter maintenance, this is the, the part of the budget that I absolutely dread. Due to the sheer cost and we have nothing to show for it. In 2023, uh, we made up approximately $1.2 million uh, in winter maintenance costs. And the unique part of winter maintenance is it's uh, January 1st to January 1st is what our fiscal year budget is. So a lot of times we always think winter starts in November and ends usually in March, April. Well, our fiscal year is January 1st to January 1st. So in 2023, January 1st, January 1st, we spent $1.2 million. Um, and then it kind of breaks down just what our labor equipment and materials were. Um, as you can see, um, majority of our cost is in our equipment and labor costs. Takes time to plow, plow the snow. On average, uh, it takes approximately, the previous slide, three to four hours to complete one plow route um, from start to finish. Uh, so that can obviously take longer depending upon the snow amount or ice totals. And what level of service we want to perform. If it's something we just want to be quick, if it's a little one-inch snowstorm, we can be in and out of there in probably three, four hours. On the county system, we typically use salt sand. Um, it's a sand mixture with 5% salt in it, um, just so the sand does not become hard. That's the only reason why the salt is in it. Uh, otherwise, on the state system, we use straight rock salt. Uh, we are trying to implement uh, brining technology, which is water and 23.3% salt solution in the water. It's great when temperatures are above uh, above freezing. Uh, right around 15 degrees is when a lot of the salt mixtures stop working. Uh, so then you have to start putting additional additives in. As you can see, note there that the, the rising cost of salt um, continually goes up year after year. This year in 2024, it's just over a hundred dollars a ton. Um, and as you can see, just on uh, the county level, we used 806 tons. So that adds up very, very quickly. In 2023, this is the list of all the equipment that we've purchased. Um, it's your typical common purchases, plow trucks, uh, pickup trucks, skid steers, dozers, trailers, brushing equipment, pretty common. There's a few pictures. And in 2023, this is the list of all the equipment that we sold. I just wanted to make it known that in 2023, the Highway Department, uh, we sold all of our crushing equipment. Uh, so we own a number of quarries that we crush materials like lime rock materials to put on the roadways or maintenance purposes. In 2023, uh, we sold all the equipment due to the lack of use. Um, we were utilizing it typically every other year uh, with this equipment. And so I sold it all and didn't believe it was justifiable. So uh, we do outsource that work currently. But I just wanted to make that known. In 2023, we uh, had the Green Light Initiative. Uh, so in 2022, the state uh, allowed municipal vehicles to utilize green lights on our uh, plow equipment and any type of municipal equipment uh, that's on the roadway. In 2023, we rolled out uh, a few trucks in particular on the interstate um, that see a little bit more traffic around them. We retrofitted the, the green lights, as you can see in the picture to improve safety as well as to support our beloved Green Bay Packers. So we got green and amber on our trucks, so everybody knows that we're supporting. And eventually, we will be, that will be a standard on all of our trucks going forward, that we will have green and amber lighting on them. That concludes my annual report for 2023, even though we're darn near in 25.
All right, any questions for Dustin? Supervisor Hagan.
Yeah, I had a question about the salt. Um, is it currently sitting outside, um, under a cover? Roof, walls, what type of bay is it currently in?
So salt has to be undercover. Um, salt sand does not, but the salt does. It has to have three walls and a roof.
Okay, I was just wondering how much do you think is lost due to exposure to the elements or whatnot? Is that anything you could guesstimate?
I guess I wouldn't know that. I know a lot of times uh, there has been research that probably 30% of the salt uh, when you're, you apply it to the roadway, actually does a bounce and scatter. So it hits the roadway and goes out into the ditches. So that's why we apply brine to it to try to wet the salt, so it makes more of a slurry to keep it on the roads. So.
Okay, thank you.
We're doing our best.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? It looks like you're off the hook.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you Dustin. All right. Onto item 10, consideration of reports, resolutions and ordinances to the County Board from the Executive Committee. Uh, item A, resolution approving 2024 budget adjustments for DHS, CJCC and Sheriff's Department. Uh, Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Bishon seconds. You've all seen a bunch of these at this point, money comes in, money goes out. We have to make sure that it's all properly balanced. If anyone has any questions, we can absolutely address them. Doesn't look like it, all right, uh, then we are ready to vote. And since it's a budget item, it is a roll call vote. Oh, sorry. Feel it, okay. Um, if you tap the screen on your microphone, we will be ready to cast your vote. Supervisor Lofer, you're, are you having trouble with your?
Oh, there we go.
There we go. Thank you. All right, motion passes. Item B, resolution authorizing 2025 uh, general obligation notes. This is the um, highways project budget. You've all heard a great deal about it. If you would like more, we can bring Bead up or Dustin or Chris or Randy or I can try and answer them. Any questions?
Sorry.
Yep.
For having some.
We're having a small technical difficulty up here getting you set up.
Any question?
I'm not seeing any questions. This is again a roll call vote, it requires three quarters. Oh, motion second, oh my goodness. Thank you Supervisor Quinn. It's been a long week. Supervisor Quinn moves. Supervisor Steen seconds. Now voting. That looks like a pass. All right, motion passes. Onto the uh, resolution adopting the 2025 budget. You've seen um, several versions of this. The most recent is pretty much exactly what it was last time. Um, again, if you have questions, we can, we can get that sorted out. I will need a motion in a second. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Uh, Supervisor Hartung seconds. Does anyone have any questions? Uh, Supervisor Quinn, you're still?
Sorry.
Okay, no worries. And you, okay, there we go. All right, seeing none, uh, again a roll call vote?
Well, this is, this is.
Oh, is this a simple one?
Yes, this is a majority.
Okay, so this is the simple one. Um, this is a simple majority vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes for the budget. Item D, resolution adopting the 2025 tax levy. Now, this is a two-thirds?
No.
Oh, this is the other.
Majority.
Awesome.
Plus a different registration was asked.
You'd think I hadn't done this several times. Supervisor Steen moves. Uh, Supervisor Bishon seconds. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, resolution authorizing the general obligation notes for the geothermal solar. Um, this is a specialized borrowing, so it is a simple majority. Nick, is this a roll call or not?
Is it a majority, Dan?
Yeah.
All right. No, it doesn't have to be a roll call.
All righty. Any questions? Oh, yes, God, man, I, I, I am very tired tonight. So I will need a motion in a second, Supervisor Steen, Supervisor Jetson. All right, now, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, we have the solar sorted. Item F, ordinance designating the official newspaper for the county, second reading. Does anyone wish to speak to this? It's on the floor from last time around, we can move on directly to a vote. Or if anyone has any questions or speaking? All right, again, another, oh, sorry Supervisor burned. No, it's, it's on the floor from the last meeting. But thank you for checking, I am clearly not on top of that tonight.
So, last meeting Supervisor Steen moved and seconded by Supervisor Headland to prove this ordinance.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, consideration of reports, resolutions and ordinances coming to the County Board from the standing committees, item 11. Starting with a committee on administration. AI, resolution adopting organizational core values, I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Morehouse moves, Supervisor Story seconds. Supervisor Headland can speak to this if anyone has questions or if you are all in a voting mood, we could do that. I am not seeing any questions. Supervisor Headland, looks like you're off the hook, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. AII, uh, I'll need a motion in a second. Supervisor Bishon, Supervisor Wolf. Uh, same, same as last time, if anyone has questions, we can go ahead and cover those. All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. AII, resolution approving cancellation of un-cashed checks over two years old. We can get you an explanation for that if you want, want it, but otherwise, I would need a motion in a second. Supervisor Story moves, Supervisor Jetson seconds. Any questions? All right, uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. AIV, resolution adopting vision benefit. I will need a motion in a second. Supervisor Headland moves, Supervisor Steen seconds. Uh, same deal. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, standing committees, uh, item B, resolution approving jurisdictional transfer of old E for highway. I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Brock now moves, Supervisor Larry Bjork seconds. Any questions? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Which brings us to 11 announcements. Uh, so the first one of those, just keep it in your head. We are, our next meeting is a special meeting, uh, December 18th, 2024. It'll be virtual, although Room 54 will be open if anyone wants to come in here and be social. For that part of the meeting, you are more than welcome to. Um, one other announcement, I would like to thank everyone, we are, we are all present and in the room. Robbing Nick of his last chance to have me issue an arrest warrant, Greg Supervisor in here.
County Board Chair is authorized to issue an arrest warrant.
Uh, he, he's been reminding me of this for years and I, I think he's really a little bit bummed that we didn't get the opportunity before the end of the, right? And, oh, uh, sorry.
Andrew, um, on your, in front of your stations, there are um, cards about the upcoming 2025 Legislative Conference hosted by the Wisconsin Counties Association, February 25th through the 26th in Madison. Um, if you are interested in attending, you can return this card to me or email me and let me know. I would like that by December 18th, which is, you recall, is the time of our next meeting. So if you would like to attend that, please let me know. Um, and we'll schedule your um, registration and get you a hotel for that.
All right, and with that? Oh, what? Oh, sorry, Supervisor Thomas, I missed you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a quick question, that virtual meeting on December 18th, 7:00 PM yet or is that a different time?
7:00 PM?
Thank you.
All right. With that, we are adjourned, uh, an hour and five minutes.
But if more than 15 of you show up, don't talk about business.
Yeah. Well, if, if, if more than two of you show up, don't talk about business.
I, I was a little worried then. So first of all, I thought it was very. I thought you were invitation. I thought it was X. The other thing I. I expected to be. But I also thought it was pretty heavy. Spawning heavy ale. Oh, I didn't know. I mean, I have three things prepared. The legality of the levy, though, you know, it's legally required. And so, and we try to, it's like you try to fire these little incentives. So. So the world was just moved on without, and I really couldn't find anything in there that, you know, like, here's what happens if you don't do it. Holy crap, there's so much stuff to state. And it's just for, like, if you have to get it downstairs, it's this uh, maintenance of effort statute for, for a lot of person, and fire fighting and stuff. You can't manage, you can't diminish the Sheriff's Department and it's low a certain level. And if that gets certified to the state, they don't. And if you, if you diminish it, you lose 15% of your general revenue.
Chair revenue, yeah.
Chair revenue, yes, I mean, it's just crazy.
To be told about.
Well, they get them anyway. They have, yeah, tap, so we, we also have a general. we also have a general requirement for it to happen.